13, 2023 at 5:00 PM. The only thing we have on the agenda today for this work session, and we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that for the regular meeting if you want, will be listen to the executive recruitment candidates, Slavon Management Consultants. They're going to present to council via Zoom to answer questions regarding the search for a city manager. Ms. Stephanie, did you want to introduce them or do we just use point get straight into it?
Get started.
Okay, can you, can y'all hear us?
Yes, Dave can.
We will give you the floor for your presentation then.
And David, are you good? You're not good. Oh, you'll see our both David's name, David's name on both my picture and his, and the reason for that is we had to share the invite. Mine didn't come through clearly. I'm Bob Slavon. First of all, and the company is Slavon Management Consultants. First of all, I want to thank you folks for making this opportunity available to us again. Last week, we had, we thought we had it worked out so that at least one of us could talk with you last week, but as it turned out, we got a client that changed our schedule and precluded that from happening. And I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you now. And I am president of the company. David and I have worked together for probably what now 15 years, David?
Yeah, that's about right.
And I think all of the work we've done in Texas and in that period of time, Dave and I have partnered on. By partner, I mean we're not, we, it's Slavon Management Consultants and David is an employee of the company when he works, when he's doing work for us. It's not a partnership, but I mean to confuse you. We're a corporation. The company was established in the early 90s for the specific purpose of providing a variety of human resources related services to local governments and nonprofits throughout the United States. But prior to that, I have done, I had performed the same function for a couple of other entities, corporations, including a large one, Corn Ferry International, and have been doing this for a total of about 40 years. And prior to that, I worked for cities and counties. The, and in the course of my practice, I've placed or been involved in managing the placement of more than, of approximately 900 executives in local governments and nonprofits covering, and that covers about 46 states. The, of that, probably now 300 are, those placements have been city managers or county managers. You have our proposal, you, and I've outlined in that proposal where we worked in Texas, some of those, of those communities we worked for numerous times. So we've had more placements in Texas than that list would indicate. The, and one of, one of the things that this company, I think, offers that, that I'm very proud of is, is the staff that will be working with you. Dave Krings, I'm gonna let him introduce himself for, in a moment, but has been active in local government management for a long period of time. He's worked for us, as I indicated earlier, for about 15 years. He's a credentialed, a retired credentialed city manager. He's been president of the International City County Management Association and has other accolades that are listed in his bio, which you have in the, in the proposal. And I'm gonna be quiet, Dave, and let you kind of talk to yourself about yourself and anything else you want, might want to.
All right. Well, as Bob said, I've got a fairly extensive career in local government, both at the county and municipal levels. I have, you know, been blessed with serving as the president of ICMA, the International City County Management Association, which gave me contacts, well, literally around the world, anyplace where they have a council manager system. I find that while there are some unique characteristics, no matter where you go, no matter which state, no matter which country, there is a common core of what constitutes good management. There's a common core as, as to what the various councils and boards want. Now, we don't deceive ourselves into deciding what you want. The most important part of our recruitment process is the very beginning, where we sit down with each of the council people individually and go through what, what are the characteristics of the next city manager with, with that they want. And when we say the characteristics, it's not just the, the hard things that really any firm would do, that, you know, tell us the educational requirements, tell us the experience requirements, but we want to get into the soft skills. If you want a person who's a really strong command and control person, and we bring you a person who's really into collaboration, that person isn't going to last a very long time. That's bad for the person, it's bad for you, and it's bad for us. Bob will get into our guarantees later, but, you know, one of those guarantees is that if a person that we bring to you leaves within the first two years, we'll do the, the search over again without, without charge for our services. We charge only for the expenses. We want to avoid that at all costs. Plus, it's just an ethical thing. We want to make sure that we get you the best possible person. I often tell our clients that I want to make your decision-making and this process difficult, difficult because we'll have so many top-quality candidates, you'll have a hard time choosing among them.
Thank you, David. And looking at growth, growth, I have been real impressed, and Dave and I have both done quite a bit of work on the internet research. We've gone through your budget pretty carefully. We've looked at your organizational structure, your location, and some of the accomplishments that you've made and some of the things that you've been doing recently and will have plans to do in the future. And I think those, and the fact that you, your manager was there for 20 years, will all be things that will excite managers who might be looking to make a professional move now. So I think there's a product to sell there that, and the location is an attractive location for city managers. So I think what you have to offer is, is wonderful, and what we can provide in terms of finding people that would be interested in your job is also impressive. We've done this work now for, for, I already talked about it, I'm not gonna repeat myself, but for a long period of time. We do have those strong guarantees. Proud of the fact that, and, and our practice, that we have only had to, to honor that guarantee for replacement four times. We really didn't have to honor it four times. One time, I insisted on, honored it four times and only once because of a performance issue with the city manager. And in that particular case, the council didn't want to let that person go. I insisted that they let him go because of some behavioral issues that I thought have happened once or twice would happen again, and they were incredibly outrageous. So we redid that. Another time, somebody quit with, in two weeks before the two years was up. Another time, somebody took a job with one council, an election took place, and ended up when he reported seeing four or five new faces. And, but more importantly, he was hired by a council that was pro-growth, and when he was, when he arrived at the job, it was a go-back-to-the-1950s type of a growth philosophy, and he didn't want to do that. So he stayed until we replaced him, but he, he left. And the fourth time, it was somebody died within the two years. So I'm real proud of that because we worked a lot, and we spent a lot of time at the beginning of the processes, Dave has said, learning what your needs are. We want to meet with you and with your permission, with your staff and with community leaders. And the whole purpose of that, first of all, when we speak with you, is to, is to get a, establish a pretty clear idea in my mind of what this mayor and council wants, but with staff and community leaders gives us a real insight into the community, the culture of the organization, and it's something that we find extremely valuable to, to being able to serve you. We're also proud that at least 25% of our placements have been of women and minorities, and that, that's a percentage that's increasing rather than decreasing. The, David was talking about our guarantees. It includes the two-year commitment that, to you. It also, also included in that guarantee is that we will continue to work for you until you're happy with candidates. Usually, that happens as a result of one search and one set of finalists candidates that you were involved in selecting prior to the time you meet them. If it doesn't result in you finding somebody during those first interviews, we keep working for you until you do. We don't charge you our last invoice until after somebody has accepted a position and a contract has been signed and they start. The, we don't come there and take a, make a list of your good employees and put them on our list of people to recruit in the future. Your client, in that regard, you're a client for two years. As far as the manager is concerned, we never take, actively recruit anybody we actually place there. We would be there at least three times in person, not virtually, at the beginning of the process for several days to, to talk with you folks, to get a feeling for their community. And then during the, right after the recruitment phases, we'll, we'll want to come back to you in, in what we call a progress meeting and discuss our findings, bring to you what we call a group of semifinalists, and have you, will provide a lot, sufficient amount of information about those folks to you, to where we feel comfortable that you could help sort, let's say there's 10 of them, sort that 10, a group of 10 into a preference group, and those that you had the most interest in become finalists. And then we go out and we actually begin our due diligence. And with us, part of that is site visits to the candidates, which people think, look at me kind of strange and said, how can you do that? Want you to visit somebody in their work location? Well, most of the time, we can do it, and a candidate will, even if a candidate will, will introduce us as consultants who have an interest in their municipality, which is true. We just don't tell them what the interest is. The, and, but we gain a lot of insight into some of what David was referring to, the soft skills, and watching people interact with people that they work, work on a day-in, a day-out basis. And we are looking for those soft skills as, when we're there. The, we, some of the things that we think may cause our, cause our firm to stand out a little bit is this outcome-oriented process we use has tied very, very strictly to what yours, tell us you want, and not something we pull off a shelf and bring to you. We're very interactive. We, our conversation, we're there three times, but we're talking with you folks at least bi-weekly and quite often even more than that. Mentioned that, oh, I didn't say this, 95 of our city manager placements stay in their position far longer than the ICMA average, which is five years. It doesn't sound like much to some, to, I'm sure to a community that's had somebody there for 20 years, but most managers' average tenure is about five, and we're proud that ours is quite, is a seven plus. So our costs are, should be competitive. We cap them so you know ahead of time what your outside cost would be. And then we have, we do charge for expenses, but those expenses are capped and don't go above that total. And quite often, we don't spend the full expense budget, and in that case, we don't bill you for what we don't spend. So I think it'd be a good idea for me to be quiet and see if I can respond to questions that you might have.
Could you tell us about approximately how large the pool is that you would be pulling from?
It's a good question, and it varies. If you'd asked me that before the pandemic, I'd give you an answer that is a little different than the one I'm gonna give you, but the reality is we're getting a smaller number of, of resumes. The quality's there. We're having to spend a lot more time in the active outreach recruiting to, to ensure that what I just said is accurate, but I would anticipate we would get about 40 or so total resumes, which we will screen down based on your criteria to maybe half of that. And then one of the things we do, we telephone them, preliminary interviews, but, but we also ask candidates that we're most interested in to complete a fairly extensive supplemental questionnaire, which is tied to your criteria, not to, it's not a document that's, that we pull off the shelf. It's something that's, that's very much tied to what you're looking for, to your goals, to your strategic plan, if you've got one, to what you envision happening over the next three or four or five years. And that is a narrative document. It usually runs four or five pages. You'll have that at that progress meeting, but, so at that point, we'll ask you to determine who you're most interested in. And let's say we present 10, it's a long-winded answer to your question about how many. Say there are 10 on that shortlist or that semifinalist list. We'll ask you individually to rank those 10, 1 to 10, and then we'll tally the rankings and let you know what the group think might be. And those people who surface through that process is at the higher end are the ones that we do the, have you due diligence on. So ultimately, you'll be interviewing about five folks.
On some of your candidates, are you gonna be interviewing people that you placed before?
Don't know. We have no way of knowing that. We don't recruit anybody we've placed before, but they have every, these jobs are in the public domain, they have every right to apply for them. And if someone of those folks happens to be, meet your criteria as well as others, then the answer to your question is yes. But we don't have any relationship with them that would cause us to be inclined to present them to you unless they really qualify. They don't know us anything, we don't know them anything.
And one last question that I have, would, would there be a problem of requiring that the candidates who had Texas prior experience?
No. No, there is no problem with that, and there's a lot of municipalities in Texas, as you know. If you'd ask that about some, well, maybe Indiana or Kentucky, where they don't, where they have a lot of municipalities, but not a lot of council manager ones, I'd hedge a little bit on that too. But no, Texas should be, and I would, would imagine, based on past experience, that Texas managers would be the ones most interested in, in your job. I would also caution you, though, that not, that not everybody that meets your criteria well, might, will, may, it's a possibility the, the best ones may not be in Texas now, and we'll bring them to your attention too. We'll talk to you about them at the progress meeting, and if you agree that they're worth pursuing, we'll pursue them. If not, we won't.
I'd like to ask about your, your fee. It says $24,242.
Yes.
And the expenses, I'm looking on page 17, if anybody wants to.
Yes.
Your, you say average, advertising cost is $2,500?
The, yes. And that's not an established cost. That's what it usually costs to, to place the announcements in the professional, with the professional associations we use. It's, it could be a little less than that, but it could be that. But that's one of those expenses that, that expense budget portion of our fee is not to exceed. If it costs more than, we have to pay more to do the work that we're proposing to do than that fee, that not-to-exceed fee. We do it, and you don't know about it. If you, unless you ask us to do something that we hadn't planned to do, which very seldom happens, but the, it's the fee, the original, the basic fee that, I had that in front of me a minute ago, that you pay. It's like a attorney's fee or a CPA fee, and it's the, oh, here it is. It's $15,640. And then the expense not-to-exceed expense budget is 55% of that, which is $8602. It's that $8602 from where, where the expense for advertising comes from and our, our travel expenses comes from. The only thing it doesn't count, I include, is candidates' travel, cost for candidates to travel to you. We have no way of knowing where that would be. If they are all from Texas, Texas is pretty big. It's a possibility that it costs more to fly from one part of Texas to another part than it would to fly from out of state into, into Texas. But that's, the risk we take with that is that if it costs more than that $8602 to do this work, then you don't know about that. We don't charge you for it.
So the $24,242 is your basic fee?
No, the $15,640 is the, is the professional fee. We add another, the $8602 is the expense budget. You will pay the $15,640, but if we don't, and then we charge you in addition to that expenses, and our expenses will not exceed $8602. And if you add those two together, that's where you get the $24,242.
Okay. And is that a, is that paid in three or four separate payments, three or four separate payments or all?
Yes. Once we, we come and build a, and collect the information necessary to develop a recruitment profile, which we send back to you in draft form, we don't begin the work until you approve it, because that gives us our marching orders, if you will. That becomes our gospel. So then we bill you. Once you approve that, we get started, we bill you a third. And then at the progress meeting, which I've described, is right after the final, the final filing of the date for the candidate's application, and we bill you another third. And then when you, at the interview phase, where you're interviewing candidates, we pay you, we bill you the other third, third, and then when the candidates, I'm, I'm not saying that right, we bill you 33 and a third, well, we reserve, we hold back 10%, so it's, the third is a third of, I'm getting really confused.
A third of 90%.
Yeah. So we bill you 90% of, and the way I just described, and then we hold back 10%, which we don't bill you for until you have a candidate who's accepted employment and begun.
We should avoid the confusion on the candidate's travel. They approve who they interview.
That's right.
And they, they pay whatever the, the travel costs are for the finalists.
And that usually runs, it's hard to say because we really don't know where they're coming from. If somebody's, again, you choose, if, at the progress meeting, the best possible candidate, among the best possible candidates is somebody from Alaska or Hawaii, that'll cost you some, obviously, more than if they're from Houston or Dallas or San Antonio or Austin area.
Where's your home office base?
Atlanta, and thank you for, I meant to, I meant to mention that earlier. That was a strategic decision I made several years ago when I began to do this work, to move to either Chicago or Atlanta, and the reason for that was the amount of traveling I do is much, makes living near either O'Hare or, or Hartsfield Airport here much easier. And the, I had a partner at the time that had an office in Atlanta, so it was easy to just kind of add to that office. But it has really paid off for me because I can get to and from where I have to be much easier, most often without having to change planes, and sometimes the same day. So that's why it's there. Dave is in Cincinnati, and we have a, a office, a small office in Arizona, and a very good new consultant working out of there, also a credentialed manager, and another one in Kentucky. Then our competent class, I mean, our competent class practice is managed by an individual who lives in North Carolina.
So you would be doing all of your recruiting, basically you'd be doing it on Zoom or when you talk to candidates?
Yeah. Once you tell us what you're looking for, we get our, put our heads together and try to figure out where those folks will be. One of the, we ask you a lot of questions at the beginning of it, including, do you know folks who you think we ought to be, or you know places that are doing, that have a particularly good reputation? We do a lot of, and that's sourcing. We do a lot more sourcing than just what I had described, but once we know, have a good idea about what you're looking for, we'll figure out where those folks are apt to be. One of the questions we'll ask is about geographical preferences. If it happens to be Texas, we'll cast the net nationally, but we'll focus our, our outreach recruitment efforts in Texas and only spread out as far as we need to from there to get the quality of, quantity of quality we're looking for. So I beg your pardon, Commissioner, Councilwoman, I didn't, I forgot the, I think I'm responding to the question, but I don't think I'm doing it directly. Can you repeat the question?
Okay. I was just asking that when you interview the candidates that you see would be good for our city, that you would not be there in person with them, but you would do it on Zoom? Is that how you do it? I mean, when do you meet a candidate in person?
Again, COVID has kind of changed things a little bit. We, without any wavering from this at all, always met the finalist candidates in, at their work location, in their towns, before you meet them. We have been, when that has not been possible primarily because of COVID, we have been doing them over Zoom. And with that process, there are times when we will record those Zoom meetings and bring those recordings to you folks at the progress meeting, which does add some value to it. However, the person, interviews of candidates is very valuable in terms of our ability to see them and how they act and how they respond, and there's no way to replace that kind of, that connection by Zoom or phone or, or, it's just, well, it's like when you folks interview them, find the finalists, it's, you can learn, you can see a lot, and you can make some decisions as you want to bring somebody to town by a virtual interview, but I don't think you want to make a decision to hire somebody based on that.
And you do background checks?
Oh, yeah. We do about everything you can think of. We do credential checks, we do education, we do credit, criminal driving, criminal, both county civil and, and national criminal, civil, sex offender registry, social media, I'm probably forgetting something, did I say education? And we do referencing, we go back at least three employers or 10 years, and we try to talk to people who, these folks have worked for, and people who have worked for them and, and peers, so. And all that information is provided to you before you make a decision as to who you want to hire. Some of it is confidential, as an example, credit. We'll tell you that they have good credit or they won't, but if we provide to you what we get from our resource that provides that, first of all, it contains social security, driver's license, information that would be very easily misused. And also, we have a contract with the company that provides us that information that precludes us from being able to hand that to you, but we can certainly tell you what's there.
You think you'll have a very big pool, sorry, a very big pool of people?
Large, did you say?
Yes. Do you think you will have a big pool of people that we can, you know, look at and choose from?
Well, as I said a few moments ago, hopefully, we'll get about 40 and choose, and be able to reduce that to something maybe 10 or 12 for you to take a look at. The, let me, a couple of points that your question suggests. We need to make, in order to get people to apply for these jobs, we need to protect their identity to some extent. Texas law is, it's, well, we need to comply with what your attorney's saying we can do. Texas law is interpretable by attorneys in terms of confidentiality. And so we will comply with what that attorney here, she tells us. If we have to, to release names, we'll want to manage that process so those people's names, those candidates' names are public for as brief a period of time as possible. So sorry for the roundabout, rambling answer to your question, but it's not an easy question to answer.
That's okay. Thank you.
Bob, will you and David be our points of contact for this, or will you be assigning a team if you were to be selected?
Well, Dave and I and the possibility of our, of our new colleague from Arizona, but that's, Dave and I will have to decide that. The real reason that I- The real reason that I brought staff, people, I started this firm so I could do search work. I left several opportunities, several jobs in the past to avoid having to run a search practice, but not do the search work. So I've been committed to doing this work myself for a long time. But I brought people on because as I get older, the thought occurred to me that what happens to me and you folks if something happens to me? So that's why, but then I learned rather quickly what I should have known ahead of time, that there's real value to having people like Dave involved in these. He'll be involved. Plans are that it would be he and I that you would see. You probably wouldn't see him without me or me without him, but we would be your consultants.
Council, does anybody have anything else? We've kind of reached the end of our time here. Anybody have any other questions before we? Would you all like to make any closing statements at this time?
Well, only to say that we, again, appreciate the fact that you allowed us to do this. That's the only time I can remember doing and being in this business as long as I have, that that's ever happened. Usually, if we can't make it, that's too bad. So that I really appreciate. And the more I looked into your city, the more excited I became. I didn't know where it was when we first got the RFP, to be honest with you. But we looked at it, looked into it, and looked at what you've done and read some things that we'll want to talk to you about when. It just looks like a real good opportunity, and it looks like something we can do and do well. And I think you'd be very proud of the work we do, and we'd be honored to be working for you. And Dave?
I agree that, well, as I said earlier, our most important part of our searches is when we're listening to you. And we intend, you know, we hope we get the opportunity to do that listening and find out precisely what you want. And that may be having to do with being in Texas or maybe any number of other things. We will listen, and we will bring you people that you want, what you described.
And I know you have a meeting beginning like right now, so let me just thank you very much and tell you that we hope to be working for you and sign off. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.